Good evening. We will call our April 10th, 2023 workshop to order. And Kristen Rush, if you'll do a real call. Here. Here.
Here.
Here.
Here.
Mr. Marriott, thank you, Your Honor. I move that we excuse Mr. Pfeiffer and Mr. Jones from tonight's meeting.
Motions to excuse. Let me give you permission to vote. All votes are cast. And I just blew them off. Please vote again. I'm off to a good start tonight, guys. That passes five to zero. Mr. Pfeiffer and Mr. Jones are excused absences. Very good. We have four or three workshops tonight. First is on pocket neighborhoods. Mr. Ryan, you're up. Are you doing all three of these tonight?
I'm not even really doing this one.
You guys share the wealth?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, Rob's coming up, and then Patty's gonna do the next two. Just as a sneak preview, she is gonna do it from there because she had knee surgery, and so we don't want her to stand at the podium. So if you're wondering why she's giving the presentation from there, that's the reason why. But Rob and I are gonna be up here. So the first thing, thank you, Mayor and City Council, for allowing us to present this topic tonight. We're talking about the Land Development Code proposed changes for pocket neighborhoods. As you may recall, this came up at the strategic planning retreat in 2020 when we all got together during the pandemic and were excited to see each other. Not that we're not excited now, but we were really excited then. And one of the topics that came up was this idea of pocket neighborhoods. And so I just wanted to give a little bit of history where this comes. A pocket neighborhood is kind of defined as a commercial use inside an established residential area for the use of being able to serve the local community on their needs. So it's not really a regional commercial approach. And so Rob has put together a new zone district that would establish this. Currently, there are no zone districts in the city of Arvada that allow this, but if somebody wanted to come in, they could rezone to this with council approval. So I'll turn it over to Rob.
So Ryan touched on this slide pretty well, so I'll just skip that one. As Ryan mentioned, this is an attempt to allow that small-scale commercial in a neighborhood or a pocket neighborhood area. And so as the first draft, this was kind of the purpose we came up with for the district, the commercial neighborhood. And that is to allow for small-scale retail, restaurant or services within or adjacent to a neighborhood.
Isn't that former Mayor Free's office building there?
Yeah, I was gonna, yeah, at their own Wadsworth, yep. And that's an example of what we're trying to get to with this proposed ordinance. That was actually done through a PUD process back in the day, but that gives you an idea of kind of the scale initially. The district would be very similar in terms of allowing for a commercial building that is more or less residential in design. So the requirements that we've initially laid out would be a minimum lot size of 10,000 square feet, and that would allow for some off-street parking to occur on the site without necessarily clogging up local streets or collector's streets in the vicinity based on the use. But it would have a maximum size of one acre, again, to maintain the small-scale nature of the proposed use. The setbacks would be very similar to what we allow for residential uses in the RN zoning districts. So fairly minimal front setbacks for a more urban-type design, a maximum setback of 20 feet, which would be about what we allow for residential structure, side and rear setbacks, again, fairly similar, a little bit bigger than what we would require for residential, but about five-foot difference on the side. And then parking would have to be setback if there was parking on the site. The proposed heights would be identical to what we allow residential structure to be built at, built to in the RN zoning district, 28 feet for the primary structure, which could allow a two-story building. Landscaping proposal is 20% of the site to be landscaped, again, pretty close to what we require for a minimum for residential. The uses would allow a fairly wide array of uses. However, we are proposing that they be conditional uses primarily, with a couple of exceptions there at the bottom that would be permitted uses. But those that would be conditional would require council to kind of sign off on the proposed uses to make sure they are still neighborhood-compatible. We've proposed some limitations to, again, make sure we have neighborhood compatibility, and that would be limiting the hours of operation so that it doesn't, no operation really goes too late at night to cause a nuisance. Parking access, the way this is proposed, access would have to come from an arterial or a collector's street, not a local street, where so we'd have, you know, mostly residential uses coming off of local streets. This would shift the access to a more, to a busier street rather than those local streets. We would use our standard parking requirements. However, there is an opportunity already in the code for parking reductions. And if it was appropriate for that particular use, based on a parking study that the applicant would provide, we could potentially reduce the parking so that, again, it has more of a neighborhood feel. And hopefully, the intent is for people to walk and bike to these establishments rather than drive, because they should be neighborhood-oriented. In terms of landscaping and buffering, we would allow all the variety of buffers that we currently allow in our code, as well as what's shown here as option E in the Land Development Code, which would allow just for a six-foot solid wall separating parking from an adjacent use. And this is, you know, would be still in scale with a commercial or with a residential use. Signage, we would apply the same signage that we allow in Old Town, which are smaller signs, more pedestrian-oriented signage for this type of use.
And that would be citywide?
Citywide for the CN district, yeah. And then here's just a few examples to kind of give you a flavor of what could potentially be redesigned and redeveloped for a commercial use. These are on Ralston, and these are actually in the Old Town zoning district, but it kind of gives you a flavor for what can, what could happen in a residential structure. The zoning district would allow for buildings to be pulled closer to the street within five feet of the setback or the right-of-way, sorry. So this just gives you an example of some smaller retail buildings in Denver that have been converted, yeah.
Let me ask you a question about those, since you have these pictures up. It's topical, you know, one of the things you went over just a minute ago was the landscape requirement being 20%, but when I look at these two, I would say neither of those have 20%. Is that, is that landscape requirement like some of these other requirements that can be modified upon approval? So that's kind of a, in there as, if you're gonna do it as a use by right, but you can change that as you go through? Because I, you know, I picture this is more the case of what, when people are looking for this, pocket neighborhoods wouldn't fit everywhere, but in places that would fit really well, and that would, that landscape requirement would totally eliminate that.
Yeah, and these are some examples, of course, where it's kind of commercial buildings back-to-back.
Right.
So if you had a residential building, the 20% shouldn't be too onerous. But if you wanted a situation where you had back-to-back commercial like this, certainly that would be something we could look at in terms of up to 20% reduction. We do have the minor modification, which is a staff-level approval. If they wanted to go any lower than that, it would be a major modification, so the council could review that. At the same time, they're kind of reviewing the entire project.
Okay. I picture, you know, the one that we've heard lots of talk about would be, you know, the property over at 69th and Indiana or something there, and, you know, developing that as a pocket neighborhood with some commercial intertwined in with whatever residential might be there. And my picturing of that would picture not just a single commercial use somewhere in the middle of that neighborhood, but that there would be kind of clustered together in, at one of the crossroads or something there, and that you would have just this type of a, type of a situation. I would encourage us to just think about that as how, as how we, how we might express that, just to, not that it's, the way you've got it isn't able for an applicant to ask for and get it changed, but if we're trying to encourage these types of things, anything that kind of just smoothes that, makes that a little bit easier, we might think about.
Okay, sure.
Thank you.
Yeah, you bet. And then these are just a couple of last examples. The previous two were kind of more historic and in character and more urban. These are some new build construction, one in Westminster and one in Edgewater, so it still gives you kinds of flavor. And that's what, you know, potential two-story building could look like, the Westminster, Westminster example. So the intent here is really to create the zone district and codify that in the Land Development Code. But unlike what we did in 2020 with the remapping, we are not proposing at this time to pick any particular locations for this zone district, but allow that to be a discussion between a potential developer or user and the council as it would come forward with the rezoning and the conditional use piece. And with that, are there any additional questions?
Anybody have anything?
I have, I have one, thank you. Just one additional question, you know, you mentioned this could be a possible zone district that someone might ask for. What about the, if you're developing more than just a site, but you're developing a larger site into a neighborhood like this, what about the residential piece of that? Is this something that each parcel in the development would be zoned differently into the, into the CN? Or does the CN cover the residential part of it too, so you might zone 10 acres this way and then develop it as a pocket neighborhood?
The way it's written now, this would just be for the commercial use. So they would have to rezone or zone the residential, one of the residential districts, and then kind of determine where they'd want this type of use and rezone it CN.
So this would be, this would be a parcel-by-parcel zone, really, especially with the one-acre maximum size in it anyway, it would have to be. So if you were gonna develop 15 acres with some commercial at the crossroads in the middle of it, you would come and apply for, you know, whatever, whatever the zoning, and then you break those parcels into pieces and ask for those to be a different zone, is that?
Right. You, you know, we still have, we still would have the PUD option as well. That's still in our code. But if somebody wanted to go ahead and do kind of this fine-grain with the zoning, they could do that or, or the PUD.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Ms. Simpson?
Thank you. So I was looking at the different types of uses that could be used in this new CN zoning, and I see that bed and breakfast is not allowed, and I wanted to get your thoughts on, on why bread and, I understand why a hotel would not be, but why potentially a bed and breakfast wouldn't be?
Good question. It didn't really cross my mind, so that is certainly something we can add into the list. And it would be something that would be consistent with this use palette.
Yeah, that's perfect, because I think about, for instance, the Lumber Baron Inn down in Denver, which is buried inside of a neighborhood, but is wonderful, and it has a restaurant you can go to, and it's lovely, and some of our historic properties might be good for those uses, so.
Thank you for pointing out that.
Good thought. I don't see any other questions. Thank you. Thank you for following through on something council wanted to implement. Okay, Patty, you're up, but you can stay seated.
Thank you, I hear you're down.
Yeah, get down.
Thank you. I appreciate the accommodation as well.
Not an issue.
Tonight's presentation is an overview of the draft plan developed through the planning process to create the Newtown Subarea Plan and Northwest Arvada Subarea Plans. Just a moment, I'll get the clicker. Thank you, Ryan. And I'll go through these quickly, because a lot of this is what was presented back in August. However, I'm highlighting what the changes are, and they have the final document as well. The subarea plan focuses on special geographic areas within the city and help to create a long-term vision for future redevelopment and future redevelopment in those areas. The Northwest Arvada Subarea Plan and Newtown Subarea Plans were initiated in 2020, and we went through an extensive community engagement participation process. The plans, these draft plans for these two sub-areas have been completed, and tonight's presentation is an overview of those draft plans. The development of the Newtown and Northwest Arvada Subarea Plans were guided through the evaluation applicability of various policies and city plans and documents to ensure consistency with the goals and policies of those documents and extensive community and stakeholder engagement throughout the development of the plans. As listed on the slide, I won't repeat those. The draft plan review and comment period, we completed that plan in mid-December, and there was a 30-day review period in which we sent out notices to the participating community members, the committee members as well on the city website, social media platforms, to inform them of the draft plan being completed and get their, initiate their feedback. The project teams reviewed and evaluated their comments received from the community for revisions that were included in tonight's presented plan. The Newtown Subarea Plan, the overall goal for this plan was guided by a vision statement developed through the process to create the plan as shown on the slide. The Newtown Subarea Plan is generally defined as a commercial corridor along Wadsworth Boulevard and bypass between the G-line tracks on the north and Interstate 70 on the north, or to the south. The Arvada Marketplace Center along 52nd Avenue is included in the study area for this planned area. The draft focus elements developed through this process and refined with the community are land use, parking, views, connectivity, design with some emphasis on architecture, place-making and streetscape, infrastructure and sustainability. During the process, the community provided guidance on development opportunities in the study area and gave feedback on the preferred land uses along this corridor. These include the recommendations listed on the slide. Specifically, auto-oriented uses were preferred south of 52nd Avenue and a lower height transition zone just on the east side of Wadsworth Bypass adjacent to the Columbine Neighborhood. In addition, the recommendation to encourage higher density and multifamily and affordable housing in the residential development was an element that the community wanted to share that was taken into consideration for future redevelopment in this area as well. Additional elements of the plan included parking and views. There are large overparked areas that currently exist in this subarea, which offer an opportunity for redevelopment and also allow for additional density and better use of the land. The draft recommendations include encouraging reduced parking for infill development of mixed-use development and that each development be evaluated for additional parking, reduced parking requirements. In addition, a comment we received during the draft review period was to include managed parking strategy, and that has been added as a recommendation to increase parking efficiency in this area. And then finally, during the plan process, some views towards Mount Evans, the Front Range and downtown Denver were identified as important when considering redevelopment in the subarea. Therefore, we included a recommendation to provide a preservation or view corridor map and to preserve these views from Old Town Station Transit Platform important to this location to the south.
Could you explain what managed park?
I know, yes. That actually specifically came from our staff, and that includes having parking limits, paid parking and validation systems within the area to help with the parking management in the area.
So what is that solving for, though?
To help with parking, to help with parking, the appropriate parking and having parking that, that would be, I'm not getting the right term here. Go ahead.
Generally speaking, it allows for parking reductions because of the more efficient use of how parking is managed. As a result of parking being managed, you can use the land more efficiently. And whether you have more multifamily residential, whether you have commercial or whatever, you are, instead of relying on the fact that you have one space per thousand square foot or whatnot and needing to manage that, how do you say, well, these spaces over here are being utilized in this way, but on a different time, we don't need those spaces over here. We're gonna use these spaces. And by managing all those things efficiently through different measures that you might go, you might be able to utilize the land in a better function and make it more efficient and economically viable for this community.
And these are additional tools that help with the efficiency of parking as well. Any additional questions? Thank you, Ryan. Another prominent comment we heard from the community during this process, and again with the draft plan comments received in December, was a desire for improved pedestrian and bicycle connectivity. In response to these concerns, there is a pedestrian and trail connectivity map that was created through this process, as shown on the slide, and identifies potential locations for improved connectivity within the subarea. In addition, the recommendations of the plan include working with CDOT to evaluate improved pedestrian crossings along Wadsworth Bypass, including the intersection at West 55th Avenue, removing the south side of West 52nd Avenue from the Land Development Code pedestrian priority street designation. The reason for that is pedestrian priority streets in the Land Development Code were created to activate pedestrian and transit-oriented areas through the varied street and building design elements. And with the change of the mixed-use transit zoning on the south side of West 52nd, we've, that was more appropriate to remove that pedestrian priority zone and so that it would be consistent with the zoning that's being recommended.
Can I, I'd like to follow up on that, because, I mean, I guess I have two related questions, and this goes back to a couple of slides when you were saying, if I understand correctly, so this, this block that is south of 52nd and east of Wadsworth was not to be mixed-use but solely commercial? Did I understand that correctly?
It would be, I'm sorry, it would be mixed-use. It would no longer be mixed-use transit. And the zoning would be mixed-use suburban and mixed-use urban. It would still be the same height. That zoning is more appropriate with auto-oriented land uses that are allowed and also the design elements that are included in those zone districts. And that was the reason for the recommendation.
So, yeah, I guess I just, I have a problem with, with that change. I mean, I feel like, on two fronts. I mean, one is I, I look at that area today, and, you know, there's definitely a lot of open parking space not being utilized. And I think of other areas similar to something like that, we can see in the Denver metro area. They're that close to maybe even I-70, where you could put some apartments, nice apartments right there, and other types of more mixed-use residential with the commercial. And therefore, I feel like we need to keep the transit-oriented piece to that, because if you're gonna have multifamily of some sort of development there, it would be really good to have the transit component as well. So can you kind of talk through a little bit more about the thinking?
Yes, I'll let Ryan elaborate a little further.
Yes, so we agree with you. And so I think it's a, it's a little bit about semantics and intensity. So when we were evaluating, sorry, when we were evaluating this, the mixed-use transit, which we also have right next to the Old Town Station, has lot coverages that get up to like 80%. And so it's all building, no parking or structured parking and those types of things. It requires multi-story buildings. It requires the ability to have all those pedestrian connections inside. But the, the parking is more limited, and it's just a way more packed, dense city block, if you will. The mixed-use urban still allows you to do that, but it doesn't require the same kind of lot coverages. It allows for more parking. Since the community identified this as being more auto-centric in terms of getting things from I-70, going on the bus route, going on Wadsworth and all those things, having the intensity come down a little bit allowed for the variety of those uses. It still absolutely allows for 120 square, square feet, 120 feet in height that could be residential. It allows for all the things that you've just described. It just does it in a little bit more location-specific. It's, it's more appropriate because it's not right next to the train station. If it was right next to the train station, what, what, that T would make a lot more sense. But because most people are gonna either take a bus or they're gonna drive to this location, the U makes a little bit more sense. So it still allows for mixed-use. It still allows for the residential. It's still very intense. It's still 120-foot-tall buildings. So none of that is going away. It's just a little bit more conducive to that auto-centric way of getting into the development.
Okay, I understand that. Thank you for that explanation. I guess my, my follow-up is then, I mean, you know, I look at this area today, and it is not pedestrian-friendly. It is not bicycle-friendly. And I think my one concern is I don't want us to continue down that path in that direction. I feel like we need to be going in the other direction and looking at how we can make it more pedestrian and more bike-friendly. So I hope that is part of, part of what we're looking at for this area.
It is, and connectivity was a very strong concern and focus of this plan. And in addition, to, to address, the plan actually includes some examples of infill parked areas with these higher-density developments and to take advantage of the overused parked areas in consistent with what your concern was for that area.
Okay, and just to finish up, then, looking at this particular map, because when I read that, I see like, because you're saying you're removing the pedestrian priority street design on that section between Wadsworth and, I don't know what that street is where it ends going east, but, no, this street right here, whenever that is where it stops. So, you know, I'm like looking at, well, if you're, if you're walking or a bike or other non-automobile mode, then how do you get north to Old Town? And what I'm hearing is we're removing that. So I just, you see why I'm, what I'm asking is, what is that, what does that entail? If I'm on a bike or if I'm walking, how do I get from Arvada Marketplace to Old Town?
It doesn't preclude it from being pedestrian-oriented or usable. It, it is removing, in the Land Development Code, we have specific pedestrian priority streets, and this is one of those areas identified with that. And this was consistent with the recommendation for the zoning. And Rob has some additional comments.
It's, it's, it's less about the actual pedestrian environment horizontal and more about the vertical kind of relationship with a building. So we would still get improved sidewalks. We would still have a pedestrian area and potentially even bike lanes. What it would be removing is that urban design element that requires a building to be right up to the sidewalk, two stories directly adjacent to the sidewalk. So the pedestrian features would be the same, just not the interface with buildings.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate all that.
Another focus of the, for this area was asking the community their input on architecture and place-making, specifically as it relates to design in the area. And they, the preferred design and feedback we received from the community was included multiple building styles, including modern and traditional. However, they, they have preferred natural materials such as brick or stone and modern elements as architectural accents to those type of building styles. So the draft plan recommends implementation of preferred architectural design through development of additional specific guidelines or Land Development Code amendment modifications. Secondly, place-making was another component of the plan to identify areas to be linked together and create opportunities for place-making appropriate in this area through small urban parks. The draft plan identifies the general locations for these potential small urban parks and recommends that these locations be considered in new development or redevelopment projects. Streetscape design can enhance the street and pedestrian experience while further defining pedestrian connections. And this goes specifically to your previous questions as well for the pedestrian zone areas. The streetscape design elements help create safe pedestrian The streetscape design elements help create safe pedestrian-friendly paths to encourage users and improve walkability and connectivity in the area. Two options were developed and the draft plan recommends streetscape option A for those non-pedestrian priority streets as identified in the previous, previous slide and map. And that includes an eight-foot area with zero-scape design plus a six-to-10-foot sidewalk from the street curb. Streetscape option B would be for the pedestrian priority streets identified in the Land Development Code and that would include an eight-foot treelawn area with six-to-10-foot sidewalk from the street curb. These potential streets specifically for option B include Van Street between the RTD commuter gold line and West 55th Avenue, future Van Street extension to the south and again, the pedestrian priority streets. In response to previous community and board feedback, the draft plan includes infrastructure and sustainability-focused elements and recommendations. The overall recommendation for both of these elements is to evaluate infrastructure and sustainability at the time of new development or redevelopment. The development of this plan also considered sustainable practices such as higher-density development, green space, multimodal connectivity, landscape planning and others with this draft plan.
So the option that you had before of option B had grass on there, but then the next slide talks about sustainability options, which seems counterintuitive if we're trying to go with sustainability. Wouldn't we want both options to be on a more zero-scape?
The, the pedestrian priority streets, as mentioned earlier, are more that main street feel and it is something we could reconsider for having more flexibility in that zone. But it was intended to allow trees and canopy trees to improve the pedestrian experience in those, in those areas.
Okay, thanks.
Overall, these were the comments that we received during the 30-day period in, in December and they have been incorporated into this draft document. The highlights of them, of these comments included focus elements such as land use and redevelopment, parking, connectivity and noise concerns along Wadsworth and I-70. Recommendation and priorities of the plan are intended to be specific yet flexible for each vision and focus element to be achieved. The implementation strategy for this plan, for the Newtown Subarea Plan, is identified in the last chapter and includes columns with action items with the, first column is action item number and followed by the action item itself in the second column. The third column shows the relevant focus element as it is in the draft plan. And the fourth column is a key one with the stakeholders that suggests responsible parties to, listed to identify potential champions and partnerships. And the last column identifies anticipated timeline for each of these action items. And that concludes the Newtown Subarea Plan, draft plan. Did you have any further questions? Thank you.
Years ago, we had a model here at City Hall of what was envisioned. Do you remember that? Ryan, or do you, you've heard stories about it?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Whatever happened to that?
You know, the, one of the people, I don't, was it a physical model?
Yeah, it was a physical model.
Okay, I haven't seen a physical model, I've seen drawings.
Yeah, there was an actual physical model.
Okay, I haven't seen that.
And a lot of high-rise, I mean, it's very consistent with this, so I think we're doing the right thing.
Well, they were ahead of our time and we're just trying to catch up.
Exactly, exactly. This would've been like back in the 80s, you know, so, a long, long time ago.
Then the second, Northwest Arvada Subarea Plan. Again, the overall purpose of this plan is identified with the vision statement as shown on this slide. The Northwest Arvada Subarea Plan is generally located along Highway 72 in the area east of Highway 93 to Indiana Street and also along Indiana Street between the railroad line to the south and the city boundary to the north. This area is located both within the city and unincorporated Jefferson County. This plan was developed into two phases. Phase one is the primary study area, which identified and read on this map. And that area is located along the Indiana Street Corridor in response to the Land Development Code update in 2020 and mixed-use zoning along this corridor. Phase two is located along Highway 72 as shown in the purple on the slide and that area is not, it only included land use evaluation, whereas phase one area included looking at all elements, including transportation and circulation. The focus elements developed for this plan through the community process include land use, connectivity, design with emphasis on place-making, streetscape and entrance gateway, and then finally, infrastructure and sustainability focus elements. Part of the process to develop this subarea plan again was to explore with the community preferred land uses in both phase one and phase two areas. In the phase one area, an opportunity to increase public lands east of Welton Reservoir, which is located in unincorporated Jefferson County, through the purchase of land by Consolidated Water Mutual District who owns the Welton Reservoir just west of that area, was presented in this process, which, and would allow for the desire to increase open space in this area by changing the comprehensive plan, land use, future land use to public lands. To implement that, that's included as a recommendation for the, for the draft area plan to change the existing mixed-use of that area designation to public land designation on the city's comprehensive future land use map. In the phase two area, two future land use options were evaluated. They included option one, which to have no future land use change in this area and option two was to change future land use from industrial to mixed-use. Through board and community participation and comments, option one was generally the final preferred land use option and recommended for the draft subarea plan. Another goal of the plan was identify important areas to be linked together and strengthen the existing connectivity opportunities and improve safety in this area. Indiana Street Corridor and State Highway 72 serve as a primary connectors and there is an ongoing concern with the community limited street width and design of the Union Pacific Railroad Line Bridge crossing on Indiana Street. Any improvements at this intersection requires multi-jurisdictional coordination approvals and significant funding. The draft plan now includes a new recommendation for that, for the bridge overpass in which to support street design and street improvements for the Union Pacific Railroad Bridge overpass through future funding, development and infrastructure planning. In addition, the draft plan recommends supporting street design and trail connectivity improvements with the multimodal system, including bikes and pedestrians through future redevelopment and infrastructure planning in this area. A land use desired by the community and also identified in the retail study mentioned in the report was to create more neighborhood-focused commercial and retail uses in the phase one area. This type of land use could be developed in existing general commercial and mixed-use suburban zone districts along the Indiana Street Corridor. Potential community and community place development locations were identified through this process and the plan recommends that the overall design and elements to create commercial with community place developments be considered at the southwest corner of Indiana Street and Candellus, northwest corner of Highway 72 and Indiana Street and also to consider it with future redevelopment within the sub-area. Again, streetscape design enhances the street and pedestrian experience. Three landscape options for the potential streetscape design were included in the draft plan and would allow flexibility of the space between the curb and open space design elements appropriate for the street frontage where the future development would occur. Potential streets for the streetscape design within the phase one area include Highway 72 and Indiana, Indiana. And in order to implement the potential designs, this draft plan recommends evaluating engineering standards to accomplish these designs. And during the community engagement process, members of the community felt disconnected from the rest of the city. Therefore, we included in the plan having preferred city entry sign locations be considered with new development projects and identified in the plan. And similar to the Newtown Subarea Plan, we've included two focus elements for sustainability and infrastructure and those include evaluating both of those elements at the time of new development or redevelopment. The development of this plan actually considered sustainable practices, including more green space area, multimodal connectivity improvements, landscaping planning and others. And similar to Newtown, the implementation would, strategy is similar with the exception of an additional column identifying the phase area relevant to the action item that is recommended in the plan. And finally, these are the draft plan comments received from the public that were incorporated into this draft plan presented this evening and they included land use, connectivity and transportation concerns and comments. And we evaluated those and incorporated the appropriate ones into this draft plan. Do you have any questions for the Northwest Arvada Subarea Plan?
I'm not seeing any questions, you know. I think a lot, so much of this from my perspective is what eventually is going to come forward to what to develop up there and then, you know, hopefully it fits it within this and at times we'll have to be nimble and make adjustments based upon reality. But conceptually, I think this all makes sense.
Thank you. So the next steps are finalizing this, the draft plan and then coming back to both Planning Commission and City Council for approval and adopted, adoption in the next few months.
Great, good work everybody.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I got, I got, I was so close.
Ms. Smith.
One thing that was sticking out to me was in the new plan, you talked about these little identified urban park areas, but they're surrounded by these big box stores like Lowe's and Home Depot and I have a hard time imagining our residents going to some of these urban park areas and spending time. I kind of see it more that some homeless people would utilize some of those areas more.
Small urban parks are actually required with the land development as part of the design elements. So through this plan, we were trying to identify where we felt they would be the best location for linkage and these were specific areas that were identified by the community that they felt they were appropriate to allow those linkages throughout that sub-area.
Okay.
So when you buy your hot dog at Lowe's, you've got a place to go sit down and enjoy it.
I just didn't want it to be not utilized properly.
I don't, I don't have a phone or anything. So I, I appreciate your comment and I think that you're right. And if we had put a small urban park in the middle of a Home Depot parking lot, that would be the case, but these are really built in conjunction with redevelopment. So when we look at Old Town Residence that's being built now, there are several urban parks that are built into that that are going to be accessible, not only to the residents that are moving in there, but you know, for the rest of the neighborhood that can access it. There's also a small urban park that's being integrated into the hotel, the Marriott Residence Inn that's being built on the south side of those, that, the nine-acre lot. That will allow people to integrate with the hotel. So clearly, if there was just, we're not going to add something to a Lowe's parking lot, but if, I'm not suggesting this, if Lowe's happened to be redeveloped or whatnot and we're integrating multifamily and other things in there, then we want to have access for those families that are integrating into it to have a place to go with, immediately and not have to travel too far away.
Yeah, and through our development review process, we take all of those elements into consideration with any future redevelopment as well. Thank you.
Good point. I don't see any other questions. Ms. Gillis, anything else you've got for us this evening?
We're good, we're done.
Very good. We stand adjourned.